Good evening and welcome to another edition of Community Forum. My name is Joseph Feaster, I'm the host of the program. And this evening, we have a special program because you're gonna have an opportunity to hear from three of the four candidates who are vying for the two positions that are open on the Stoughton School Committee. And they are here and ready to let you know why you should come out, why you should vote for them, and why you should support our school system. Immediate to my right is Anita Hill, who currently is sitting in the position as a member of the Stoughton School Committee. We have next to her, to her right is Joe McDonough, who is vying for one of the seats on the school committee. And also next to Joe is Erdem Yural, who is a former member of the Stoughton School Committee and is vying for a seat this year in 2016. Welcome to you all.
Thank you for having us.
Well, you know, as we talked about in the off-air, we were saying that would give you an opportunity for you to have an opening statement, each of you, in order to tell our viewers why you are running and a little bit about you, and then we'll get into some Q&amp;A and go forward from there. So Anita, why don't you start things off by using your two minutes to tell folks about why you were running for the school committee?
Sure. I don't know if I'll go two minutes, but my name is Anita Hill, and I'm running for reelection, technically, for the Stoughton School Committee. My husband and I moved here a little more than 20 years ago. We have two children who both have gone through the Stoughton School System from K through 12. My son Chris graduated in 2008 and went on to Northeastern University. He received his doctorates in pharmacy and is now practicing pharmacist with the VA hospitals. My daughter Megan graduated in 2014, and she's a sophomore down at Bridgewater University. She's studying exercise physiology, and she wants to go on to get her doctorates in physical therapy. So we still have a little ways to go with that. I became involved in, I call it my volunteer life, back when my son was still in elementary school. I went to my first PTO meeting, and I came out as PTO president. So that got me going really fast, and I really enjoyed it. And that's when I really got into, deep into, the schools and the teachers and the administration, how hard they all work. A year later, I ran for and was elected to town meeting. So I've been, excuse me, been a town meeting representative for 16 years now. In my other life at work, I am an HR and payroll manager for a manufacturing company over in Rockland, Massachusetts. I also do all the office accounting, accounts receivable, accounts payable, I cash receipts. So I really have a good handle on the financial aspect of business and town. And last October, last year, when there was a vacancy on the school committee, the Joint Board of Selectmen and School Committee had a meeting and took applications, and there were four applicants, and they picked me and appointed me to the school committee. And that's where I am today.
Thank you very much, Anita. Joe?
My name is Joe McDonough, and I've been in Stoughton about two years now. I have two young children. My youngest will be starting in Stoughton Schools this September. I have a bachelor's from UMass Lowell in Criminal Justice, a master's from Framingham State in Public Administration. I served in the Coast Guard Reserve for six years, and I'm currently working as a firefighter on a local community. I decided to run for school committee because, one of the reasons we moved to this town is because of the school system, and I want to make sure my children, all the children of Stoughton, get the education that they deserve and need to be successful.
Thank you very much, Joe. Erdem?
Good evening, Joe. I thank SMAC and Roy Cohen and you, and especially my core candidates here, Anita and Joe, for giving media opportunity and also giving the people of the town and the voters the opportunity to get to know the candidates. I think this is a great service. My name is Erdem Yural. It's a funny name, it's because I come from Turkey, where I come from, that's a good name. I lived in Stoughton for 34 years. I'm married, I have two children. They are both in Stoughton Public Schools, one in Hanson School, and the other one is in middle school, hoping to go to high school next year. I have a home and business in Stoughton. I really enjoyed school, and I did very well in it. I have a master's degree in mechanical engineering from the University of Michigan. I have a doctorate degree in aerospace engineering from, again, University of Michigan. I came to this country because NATO, the North Atlantic Treaty Organization, gave me money to come and study in the US. Why? Because I did well in school. So I think it's really important to do well in school, so I wish that for all the kids in Stoughton. I have outstanding achievement awards from a big insurance company, FM Global, Best Paper Awards from Technical Symposiumia. I serve on national and international committees. I authored numerous publications. I am also chair of ASTM International Committee on Hazard Potential of Chemicals. I am an experienced educator. I served as an adjunct professor at the Wuster-Palatek Institute, or the WPI. I do teach continuing education classes for engineers. And I also have, over the six years I served on the school committee, I got to learn about the public K through 12 education system. So I really enjoyed doing that. I have a proven management track record. I am the founder and the owner of the president of my company. I managed a combustion resource center before, and I was a senior research scientist. And I have a track record of being committed to community service. I am a former member of the Stoughton Finance Committee. I am a member of the Stoughton Town Meeting and Special Education Parent Advisory Council. I am a committed member of Stoughton Chamber of Commerce and Stoughton Lions Club. So I'm looking forward to serving the kids of the Stoughton and the residents of Stoughton as a whole.
Well, thank you all. I mean, it's, again, background and experience that you bring to this particular effort. I do want to say that the candidate, the other candidate who was running for this office, Patricia McNeil, was invited to be on the program. She has not appeared this evening, and I suspect that she may participate in other forums or at debates that'll be held in the future, but wanted to make it known that she was invited to be here this evening. Let's talk about it. I mean, all of you have had experiences either by having children in the school, have served in capacities involving the school system, and/or have served in a lot of things just around town. I mean, some of you are what I call the 50 influencers in this town, and so therefore, I want to talk about it because we have some very pressing issues that are surrounding the school system. And Joe, I'm gonna start with you. You're the newer member of this conversation, at least for me. Some of the, some of the issue, well, to me, the major issue that's facing the school system is the construction of a new high school.
Yes.
I mean, a school building issue. And being as political as I am, I know it's a political process, working with the state and the school building authority on that, getting the legislative support and getting the funding. Talk to me about, if you were sitting on the school committee, what you perceive your role will be in terms of trying to accomplish getting a new high school built here in the town of Stoughton.
Well, currently, from my understanding, it's already gone through most of the process. Right now, it's waiting for the more or less final pricing of what it's gonna cost to build. It has to go to town meeting in May, and then it will go to the voters for some kind of a vote, whether or not they want it, debt exclusion or override. It's been talked more of the debt exclusion. From a school committee point of view, there is not much influence, or I shouldn't say influence, but there's not much authority we have over the building process. You have input, you can help promote the building. It is something that I think is very necessary. It's one of the reasons I moved to this town, is because I knew the town was going through the process of building a school. I think it'd be very beneficial to the town, like myself, it would bring in other families that wanna quality education, new facility, which will help provide that education with the children. That being said, there's financial side to it, which a lot of people are concerned about. In my personal opinion, the benefits you will get out of a high school offset the cost of the high school. Estimating $380, a little under $400 for the average household, and tax revenue increase. Over 20 years for the bond of a debt exclusion, you're talking $8,000, which I believe you will see that increase in your property value when you go to sell your house, not to mention that is probably equivalent to maybe a little less, maybe a little more, of one year of private school. So, in my opinion, that is well worth the cost increase of building this high school, which will be very beneficial to teaching these children.
Erdem, I want to pose the same question to you. I don't, and I don't presuppose what anybody, any of your positions here with respect to that is, so you can first state that, and then again, if you, whatever your view is, how would you communicate that to, you know, to the citizens of Stoughton, whichever your view is? So Erdem?
Thank you, Joe. We are all excited as a family about the new high school, because the estimate is that it will be ready in 2019, and my 13-year-old is counting the years. He says it's gonna be, daddy, daddy, it's gonna be my senior year, I'll go to the new building, because he has seen the old high school, and like the new, I mean, the younger kid is also looking forward to having a brand-new building, so it's great. The only thing that we are disappointed with the plans is that it doesn't have a swimming pool. It would have been much better if it did have a swimming pool. But you asked, what is the school committee's role? I like Joe McDonough's answer. School committee, most of the work planning has already been taken place, part of it when I was on board, part of it after I was unelected last year. But the, I think the biggest role at this stage, as always, you know, the most important role of the school committee is to be the ambassador of the school system to the public, to the residents. So we need to go out and we need to sell it to all the voters. It has been asked and answered before, you know, I think for wealthy families, it's a no-brainer, everybody is on board, everybody, or even the medium-income families. I think it will be, people on fixed and low income are concerned, and we need to find ways for them to alleviate the problems, or at least alleviate the anxiety that they will be forced, taxes will be so high, they will have to move out of town, which is not gonna happen when I'm on board.
Anita, same question, I wanted to you, in terms of, one, your view with regards to that, and you are now a sitting member on that, and I think just for the clarifying, for the voters, for the viewing audience, the school committee has a seat on the school building, on the school building authority that has been created, that's, it's appointment, the appointments are made by the town manager. But I believe that the current chairwoman is the member that's sitting on it. So the input that you're speaking about, Joe, is coming from, by Anokian's presence on that committee. But Anita, your thoughts in terms of, one, having the high school, two, how are we gonna get it implemented here in Stoughton?
Well, I also am so excited for the brand-new high school. Both my kids went through and graduated from the existing Stoughton High School. I've been there many times, we have meetings there, we have town meeting there. If anyone hasn't been in the high school, I encourage you to try and get there, to see the conditions and what we're dealing with. The Massachusetts Association of School Buildings Authority, Association, the MSBA, you hear that a lot, they are the people that we are, Stoughton is working with in conjunction to help with the funding. They have a program where they can match up to potentially 56% of the total cost. Right now, the cost, it sounds like a huge number, and it is a huge number, it's $120 million-ish for the total school. If it stays at $120 million, it would be approximately $70 million that the town of Stoughton would have to take on as a debt. That's because, like I said, 56% doesn't include everything. It doesn't include the administrative buildings, it doesn't include the football field or the soccer field. So those are what's called unreimbursable costs. And even with the unreimbursable costs, I've seen the building sketches, I've seen the plans. There are many places that people can find out whether you're a school parent or not. There's the, school building has its own Facebook page, the Stoughton School Building, the MSBA, there's the website of the town. School Committee has a link to the MSBA, there's videos of every meeting, they have weekly meetings with a work group, they have monthly meetings with the entire school building committee. It's just amazing the detail that they've gone down to, just, again, so excited about it. As far as the debt, taking on the debt in the town, it is a town debt, and it's not just for parents that have children in the school system, it's for the whole town. And even if you're never gonna have children in the school system, it's a magnet, it's an example, like Joe said, that's why we moved here 20 years ago, before a new school building. It's also gonna help your property values. Yes, if your property values go up, yo, I pay more taxes, but it's a win-win situation because if you don't have a new school building, if you don't have a new school system, it's just gonna start to deteriorate, and the opposite can happen. And I don't want that to happen for anybody in Stoughton.
Let me, you know, I'm gonna use this time here, because the one thing I've learned from Roy Cohen, I got the microphone, so therefore I can utilize it. So let me just put my own two cents in on this particular question around the school building, as a town resident who doesn't have children in the school system. It is essential that we have this school system, and I'll speak about it from the standpoint of, and I'll parrot each of you, because you both alluded to it, but let me talk about it. It has a significance of, in terms of making Stoughton a destination, so that, first, it does that, beside the educational aspects of it, because we all know, and the reports have already indicated that, that the school, the school in its present form is underperforming. If we don't do it, our schools are not gonna get certified, our high school will not be certified by, when they do the accreditation. So if we don't do it, we're gonna have a system, and I can assure you that those with children, with school age, are gonna flee to town. That's one. Two, for those who are homeowners, your property values, yes, are gonna be, will more probably not increase, but the issue on taxes, if you have a good school system, you have a safe community, you're gonna attract businesses, and the corporate rate and the business rate is higher than the residential, and the residential may be offset, because what I've learned from, from my time of living in Boston and dealing with a lot of the Boston politics, you raise the rate, or you raise the, or you raise what the, you raise the amount, amount on, in terms of the dollars that you have to pay as far as the taxes, or you raise the rate that you have, one of the two, one of the two are gonna happen. So if you have a situation where the corporate rate offsets some of the residential, very possibly, if we attract the types of businesses to it, the residential rates could go down. So I think that in the debate of it, folks have to look at the bigger picture, as opposed to looking at it somewhat parochially to their own situation, and I agree that we have to look at it from the persons who may be low income, and it may have to be subsidized, but that's, that's a planning exercise that can be addressed during that conversation. But folks, I think without the schools, we're, we're gonna be a community that's gonna be a ghost town. Yes, Anita?
If I could have a readdress, I also want to say that I think Stoughton as a town may have, don't quote me, but missed the boat in the 80s and the 90s, when there was a lot more money given away for schools, and that, maybe we should, maybe we should've built one school in the 80s and one school in the 90s, but, but we didn't. So now we're at where we are, and we need to do this.
Joe, also to add to your point, if you look at the high school student population, has been in decline over the last 10, 20 years, and part of the reason is the condition of the high school, you know, people who can afford it send their kids to private schools. So we are hoping, you know, to also bring those kids, or the, you know, Stoughton residents' kids, back into high school, and, like you say, bring in new families to town.
This is an investment, folks, that's what this really is. This is an investment on the future. If we don't make it, we will have missed the boat, and we'll have this conversation down the road, but there may not be an opportunity to do this, particularly when you have 57% or greater reimbursement on a part of the state. We have to do this, and folks should support it. But one of the jobs that, you know, that you're gonna have is, you have a five-member board that sits on the school committee, but one, and the person who you're gonna have to interface with is the superintendent of schools. That's the person who you are. Everybody else reports to the superintendent, but you folks have the responsibility, whoever's sitting as the school committee person, for hiring that person and, and working with that person, et cetera. Let's talk about, I'm gonna start with you, Erdem, in terms of, fine, what should be and what can be the working relationship with the superintendent? And I'm just gonna posit this, because, you know, during your prior tenure, it was kinda a little rinkers in terms of that particular relationship. What now that you see differently, or do you still see that we need to do some changes in that regard with the school system?
Well, first of all, I must say that I, I'm surprised you're interjecting your opinion into this debate.
Well, it was an opinion, I don't think it's an opinion, I'm just talking about, no, it's not an opinion, I think it's a matter of, but in any of it, I'll let you answer.
I think that wasn't, that wasn't right, but I forgive you.
Okay, thank you.
I think the, collectively, the five-person board is the supervisor and evaluator and, you know, boss of the superintendent. And the role of the school committee is to, you know, keep the superintendent accountable for his actions, to make sure that the superintendent does a good job. So that's, the role is defined by the law.
And Anita, you're there, as it stands right now, and having the opportunity of working, what do you see as in terms of the role of the, well, one, you're, you're doing it at the present time, but in terms of the role of the school committee persons working with the superintendent?
As a school committee member, and you can look it up online, it's Massachusetts Law Chapter 71, Section 37. The responsibilities of a school committee member are to hire and terminate and evaluate a superintendent. We are responsible to approve and/or submit the budget for the next current year, and we are also responsible to establish goals and policy for the school committee, which then would translate over to the school district. I don't consider us the boss of the superintendent, she's a professional, and we need to interact with her on a professional level. She has many more degrees than I do, and probably, you know, has spent many more years in the schools than, than anybody on the school committee, as, and rightfully so, and she has a great administrative staff. I'm very impressed with not just the current superintendent, but every superintendent that I've dealt with, in the capacity that they come up with the budget and what they can do with the dollars that we give them. It's amazing that they, they still get a great, every penny is accounted for and spent well.
Joe, your, your response to how a school committee person should interface with the super, with the superintendent of schools?
Well, like Ms. Hill said, the roles and responsibilities are written by the state, the law, they are what they are. A school committee should be able to have their own opinion, but majority rules. You have to be able to work with each other for the, for the greater good of the schools. You have to be able to deal with the superintendent, whether you like the person or not, you have to work with the person, be, hope for transparency between the two of you, so you can achieve what is needed for the greater good of the children. It's not prudent for anybody to have an axe to grind, to have their own agenda, other than the greater good of all the children in the school system. So it doesn't help anybody to act in any other way than transparently with each other to accomplish those goals. So, I mean, you can recite the roles and responsibilities, but I think it goes beyond that into just courtesy between each other and being able to work with each other.
On your point, you talked about, Anita, you talked about the budget, and I just went back, I like to go back and deal with facts, approximately $43 million was what was proposed, I don't remember what was voted by the town meeting, I presume, well, the way it works is we don't have much to say with respect to the budget that's submitted by the school department, according to the law, again. So I suspect that that $43-plus million is what the school did receive last year, that's what you're talking about, that they had to work with. But I want to come to you on another issue, okay? We, you know, the, we talked about the school building, we talked about the process of working with the superintendent. One of the things that we're always all been concerned about is in terms of how do schools rate it? How are they ranked? I mean, it's, sometime, you know, sometime those statistical things as to how the school system, how Stoughton school system, because that's another indicator that people will use as to whether they wanna come to a particular town for that. How do you see the ranking for Stoughton school system, and are there improvements or things that we need to do? Usually, I would have the statistics, unfortunately, I didn't prepare for this program such that I have them all, but I know some places we've been high in numbers. I know last year, I sat with the superintendent, and we talked about that we were outperforming another town that's close by that begins with an S in some things. So what have you found in terms of, which you're sitting on the school committee now with regards to the ranking of the school system?
Well, if you want to talk statistics, I believe we currently have four Level 1 schools.
Yes.
Which is an improvement over even last year. And that doesn't mean we're not gonna be working to get to Level 2, and if, I think one is still, it may be Level 3, to get those increased also. They're always working on the plan. It's part of not only the budget, the dollar amount, but it's part of their curriculum. I mean, they go hand in hand, you need to have the dollars to be able to make, to complete the curriculum and to carry out the curriculum, but the, like I said, the administrative staff is not just the, you know, the secretaries and the principals, it filters all the way down to every level of every teacher in every classroom. It's constantly gonna be working on it. And I see that every day, and we get reports from every principal, they come and tell us their improvement plan, their budget plans, and what they've done in the past, and what they're doing in the future, and they have their plans. It's very, very organized, it has to be. It's, there's so many students, and there's so many people involved in it, that's their job.
Joe, I know that you're paying attention to those particular issue because you have children that are in the system, but from, but again, but as a citizen of the town, any comments with respect to the ranking, any things that you see that we need, that the school system may need to improve on?
I'll start off by saying I've been happy with the education of my children, again. The thing about statistics are, you can make them look any way you want, so it depends on the criteria you're using. I know some statistics are using the age of the building. Well, when the new high school's put in place, where's it gonna put us? So statistics are only as good as the source they come from and the ranking criteria. We have, I think it's about 90% of the children go on to secondary education, not necessarily college, but they're going on to some kind of education to get where they want. I think a better way of ranking children is, when they're moving on from high school, did you feel like, did you get what you need to be where you're at? Some kind of, for lack of a better word, exit poll, to see how they did in this school and are they achieving what they want to achieve? And SAT is great for children going to college, but if you're not looking to go to college, what good is an SAT? So from what I've seen, we have children going to Harvard, you have children going to be electricians. If that's the path they wanted to take, then the school system did them right. So that is where I stand. I don't have any complaints from what I've seen so far, I'm happy with the education my children are getting, and it seems like most people I talk to are happy with the education their children are getting.
Erdem, you have children in the school system, you You've sat as a school committee man as well. Any observations with regards to the ranking of the schools? Anything you see that needs improvement?
I noticed some misconceptions even on the statement you made, we are outperforming Sharon. So there is a misconception, so if you allow me, I will explain. I think the superintendent said we have more Level-One schools, so there is a misconception of the, you know, number of Level-One schools versus the percentile ranking of the schools. And, you know, Joe made a point because some, some of the magazine rankings, they do look at the school environment too, but I'm, you know, the real ranking is the, you know, the test, standardized test performance, more specifically, the student achievement. To make sure that the school student achievement is uniform across the, you know, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the state requires the schools to carry out some standardized tests. We had MCAS, we still do MCAS for certain grades. And we have the PRC. So look at those and there is a, you know, minimum, well, not a minimum requirement, but proficient, there are requirements for students to be called proficient and advanced. So they look at what percentage of the students are proficient or above. And then based on that, there is some rankings. Now, the Level-One, Level-Two, Level-Three has nothing to do with the ranking. It's whether the school is meeting the goals set for improvement. So Level-One, Two, Three, Four, Five is whether the school is meeting the goals set by the state for improvement. It has nothing to do with the ranking. Now, if we look at the ranking of our schools, I always mention that, you know, some of our schools are really good, like the South School. We are in the top twenty-five percent of all schools in Massachusetts. So they are doing really well. Hanson School, High School, they are, on the average, Hanson School is about fifty-five, sixty percent. And the High School is at about fifty, fifty-five, fifty-eight percent. So we need to have improvement on the West School and the Middle School. Our Middle School, you know, West School is a regionalized, you know, certain part of our community. And the community is happy. And the new principal is, I like her, she is doing a really great job with the West School. We need to, to look at the Middle School and improve that because that's in the bottom one-third. So it's still not bad, but we got room for improvement. So we do need to work on that.
Okay. Well, thank you for that, for sure, from all, from all three of you. Joe, I'm going to come back to you because there are, there are a, a number of programs which exist and as Anita pointed out, from the standpoint of the budget, there is a, an array of programs that have been instituted. I guess to address some of the educational constructs that are necessary in order to, to promote the, the teacher and learning that takes place in the schools. What is your familiarity with the programs? And again, each of you coming from, since you said you do, the school committee is to do policy, are there any programs that we don't have that need to be instituted? Are there more things, as Dr. Ural said, that there are some places where we are on the middle, the lower end from, and even from ranking? Are there any things that you perceive that we should or can be doing as if you were serving on the school committee?
Are you referring to as the point of, standpoint of our children getting the education out of the school system?
That's correct.
I think the biggest factor of a child getting an education out of the school system is how the, how involved the family is with the child. If a child wants to learn, he's going to learn. If he doesn't want to, he's not going to. I understand there are some people that have more difficulties at learning and they need that extra help. But any child across the board, the more effort put into a child in his home will help him learn throughout his education. So I understand when rankings come in and everything else, it's a working class community. People don't have the time to spend eight hours a night with their children, doing, going over homework, quizzing them on everything else. But they, there is a program, a summer program, and I believe it's in February vacation and April vacation, where they enacted, I want to say, five hours a day for a few weeks over the summer to keep the children going throughout the summer to maintain what they've learned throughout the year. So they don't get that summer slide, so they don't lose the education that they've learned to help them carry over from one year to the next. So I am supportive. It actually, from my understanding, does not cost anything to the taxpayers of Stoughton because it is state-funded or...
Grants.
Let's see, okay, grant, grant-funded, thank you. Grant-funded. So it's not a cost to the town of Stoughton, it's a great program to keep the kids educated throughout the summer, where it's more like a cat camp atmosphere instead of a hardcore, we're in English now, we're in math now, we're in, so. That program I am in agreement with, but it all stems from home and the family and how much dedication the family wants to help the child succeed in their education.
One of the metaphors that I use is a three-legged, is a four-legged stool that you need in terms of, you have in terms of the administration, the educators, the parents and the child, and those got to be working in cohort in order for that chair to be stabilized. So if any of those are missing, three-legged chairs don't work well, for sure. Erdem, on the issue of any, the programs that the, that are, we currently have in the school system, are there any things that you observe that we can do or should be doing if you're sitting at the school committee man, what, that we should be doing as far as the school system?
Well, the role of the school committee is not to dictate the curriculum. The curriculum, minimum requirements for the curriculum is dictated by, right now, MasCor. But, you know, we can always do better and we should always do better. So my, you know, in terms of the curriculum, you know, there are new things that I like, like the, you know, financial literacy or the, you know, business classes out there. But I would like to see, you know, expansion of the science classes. Again, if you look at the standardized test data, I mentioned that these ranking of the schools are important because, you know, that's what attracts the people to town. Our elementary school science standardized test data shows that, you know, we need some improve, we could use some improvement in that area. The program Joe mentioned is not to educate the kids, but to, you know, make sure that the interest continues. Because if you leave the kids alone for three months, they just lose interest in, in, in school. So it's really a great program, you know, to, to do that. But, you know, that's why, you know, we hire the superintendent and we hire the, we hire the assistant superintendent, which is the, in charge of the curriculum. And I give them goals, saying that we want to improve student achievement. We want to improve the student achievement in West School. We want to improve the student achievement in Middle School. And we want to improve the student achievement across the, all the students in Stoughton. And we also want to improve the college and career readiness. And so you are, you got the PhD, you got the master's degree, we are paying you big bucks. Come to us with proposals, how we can do that. You know, the school committee doesn't dictate what the specific programs to, you know, request.
Anita, you know, same point with you as far as you're there, you see in terms of the programs that are offered, you're knowledgeable on them. Any things that you see that we are not doing, that we should be doing, and things that you might want to at least encourage the system to pursue?
Well, like Dr. Ural said, school committee is not in charge of curriculum. However, in the beginning of, and at the end, at the end of each budget year, the superintendent will come to the school committee and say, put your wish list together. And that's when we can, you know, our individually or as a group, come up with a list of, I want to have a basket weaving class or, but not, not basket weaving, but challenge the superintendent to see, A, will it fit in the curriculum? And B, do we have the dollars to pay for it? C, do we have a teacher for it? So it's, it's not just saying, give me a wish list and it's going to happen, but we are, we can suggest. And, you know, our, we do matter and Dr. Rizzi does come to us and say, I'm really impressed, I saw the, the course offering for, for this coming year and one of the items on there was an A-plus certification course, which is, you basically learn how to build your own computer. And I've gone through it on my own time, but it's, it's really fascinating and interesting. And it's the beginning step for those kids to start to, if that's the path they want to go down to in IT or in networking, it's, it just gets you so, it's so interesting. I wish I could do it full-time. But they have language courses and they're bringing an engineering curriculum from elementary school all the way up through high school, which is another just fascinating and huge vast, you know, another core path that someone could go down. So they are, like Dr. Ural said, again, the, the state mandates certain courses and mandates some curriculum, but we go above and beyond and we always try to push the envelope as much as our dollar will let us.
I will just, just will point out, because I'm a believer in that budgets are planning documents.
Yes.
And the school committee approves a budget. So I think school committee has a little more influence than, than you might want to articulate what a budget process, a budget is a planning document.
I, I agree with you in part. You know, school committee approves the budget and it's not appropriate for the school committee to, you know, make a request for a specific course like typing or A-plus certification. It's appropriate for the school committee is to rely on the professional expertise of the superintendent and assistant superintendent, all the, you know, curriculum coordinators in the school system. We say, well, you know, we want, we want to have a measurable goal. We want to improve the student achievement with respect to MCAS tests or whatever, whatever. But tell us, what's the right measure to do this? And we, we want to see improvement in this area. Tell us what you're going to do and how you're going to measure it.
That's right.
And then what do you, what resources do you need? So that's the role of the school committee.
Absolutely. And that's what I just wanted to have you all admit that in terms of that is a role that you do play, or other than a rubber stamper, you have an ability in order to engage in the conversation on what is the education that's provided to us, to our, to our children. So that's what I wanted to hear you say and I'm going to draw it out. I'm going to start with you because this is an issue and our, our time is moving along. We're having such a great time here, but time is moving along. But one of the issues that I raised in, in a meeting about two years ago, and I know this policy was adopted by the school committee, was one on diversity. Because one of the issues in terms of diversity, as far as the educators and administrators in the town of Stoughton is woefully, is woeful. What, that is a policy I know that was adopted by the school committee and you're sitting there now, Anita, I'm going to start with you. What, I'm not sure that there's been some great movement. What is your view on, on, on the issue of diversity and what might you do in order to try to move that forward within the school department?
Well, obviously, diversity to me, I mean, I come from a large family. My father was one of twelve and he grew up down south and we have a, we were talking earlier, a mutt background, if you want to call it. I mean, I don't think anyone is full-blooded anything, for the lack of a better term. I mean, I'm German, Irish, Indian and Scottish, you know, American Indian. So there's, it's a strange mix, but that's what I am. And everybody's a mix. There has to be people that get along with everybody, no matter, you can't make a judgment on a surface. It's like judging a book by its cover. That never works. Diversity, it's unfortunate that we have to have policies, but we do. And as a matter of fact, the policy book, the policy manual for the Stoughton school committee has just been finished. It's in its draft form and it's about this big. And we've gone through eight sections, A through D, in form. It's not been replaced yet, but we've got sections F through L, I believe it is, that we are going to be tackling within the next school committee meeting. And it's been, with the help of the MASC, the Math, excuse me, Massachusetts School Committee.
Yes.
Yes. They are helping us with, and Joyce Susani was the coordinator for that with Dr., with Jonathan Ford. They've gone through every single policy and procedure and they've updated it, they've brought them into compliance. And there's areas that cover everything, including diversity, including all the compliance issues that you have to have as a board and as a school district and, and, and for future reference, so to speak. So diversity is an unfortunate part of our society as far as it has to be there. It, my feeling, it shouldn't have to be there. It should just be human nature that everybody is given an equal chance for an equal opportunity and not be judged.
Thank you. Joe, same question for you.
It, it's a, like, like Anita said, it's a, it's unfortunate that the topic even has to be discussed. I am, I'll start with, it's hard to implement diversity when you have teachers that have been there for so long. You can't just kick somebody out to make a diverse. It, it just doesn't make good sense to get rid of people to bring in people. In my opinion, fill out an application, give everybody a number, hire the most qualified person. I would, it would be great to see a more diverse staff that represents the community, but at the same time, it doesn't make a difference to me what nationality you are, what race you are, what religion you are. If you are the best teacher for my child, that's who I want to teach my child. So would it be great to have a diverse staff? Yes. But do I want a well-educated, motivated, caring teacher that is highly enthusiastic to teach my child and make them succeed? I'd pick that over the later, anytime.
I just want to say, I don't think there's any debate on that. The issue, I probably, if we have time, want to talk about, there are some outreach things that can be done in order to accomplish particular types of goals and maybe we can talk about that. Dr. Erdem, want to, Dr. Ural?
Sure. You can call me Erdem.
Yeah. Just your thoughts, because I...
Yeah, I'll, I mean, I also come from ethnic minority, so, I mean, obviously, diversity is important to me. Back in, I forgot when I started running for the school committee, but when I, my kids went to Stoughton schools and then I started going to school committee meetings, I said, I can do better than these guys. So I decided to run, but I had no hope that I was going to win. I ran because I wanted to interject my ideas to the campaign of the peoples. And then when I got elected, I was so surprised. So Stoughton is a diverse town and it welcomes diversity. I mean, otherwise, why would they elect a Turk when there is only maybe two or three Turks in town? But going back to what Ms. Hill said, you know, the policy manual is a really big undertaking. And we hired Massachusetts Association of School Committees to, you know, rebuff and collect and to beef up all our policies when I was the chair. And during which time you came to our board and you came, you proposed a diversity policy. And you and I had really long discussions because I, I didn't understand why we would need a diversity policy when the equal opportunity employment was the law. And it was very educational for me. I thank you for those discussions. But the purpose of the diversity policy, as we decided last year, was to allocate some money for the superintendent to travel to primarily minority colleges and try to recruit from those colleges for people of minorities. So that could be black, that could be Hispanics, that could be gays, lesbians and bi. So it, you know, all the minority groups. So I don't know, I haven't seen that in the budget. I looked for the new budget, but maybe it's there. I haven't seen it. So I, I, I think we should continue pursuing that. But one thing I was disappointed with the school committee is, you know, we had a minority member in our school committee. And I would have wanted to see her as the vice-chair of the committee last year. And I'm surprised that didn't happen, but, you know, so I don't know the details. I wasn't on the board at that time.
Thank you all for that. We are winding down. I want to give you your... I want to give you your opportunities for your two minutes closing, and then I want to close out the program. I want to thank you all. I want to encourage our viewing audience that the election takes place on Tuesday, April 5th. So we want to make sure that you do. The polls open up at 7:00 in, in the morning and close, I believe, at 8:00 in that evening. It's important that you let your voices be known by voting, so want to encourage you to do that. I think I started with you and Anita, so I'm going to start with Joe. Live election, we're starting at, whoop, the, as I said, the polls open at 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Tuesday, April 5th. There's a live election results show will be held starting at 8:30 that evening of April 5th on Comcast Channel 9 and Verizon Channel 28. So my memory was pretty good on the election stuff, so I did pretty good even without looking at the prompter. But Joe, I'm going to start with you for your two minutes, then to Dr. Ural, and then to you and Anita, and then I'm going to, we're going to be quick to close out the program. I'm going to hold you to your time, because I only have 6 minutes and 31 seconds. So Joe, you're on.
I'm asking for your vote in April because I think I'd be a good addition to the school committee. I'm an independent thinker that'll stand up for what I believe is right. I also have the ability to work with others to make sound decisions for our children's With that being said, I, I just ask you to consider me in April for one of the two positions on the school committee. Thank you.
Dr. Ural.
Thank you, Joe. I'd like to start by thanking you and Roy Cohen in the back, and all the SMAC employees, and my co-candidates here for making this possible. This election year, you get two votes, so I'm not asking for you to give me both votes. Just give me one of your votes. We all want to improve our town's economy. We would like companies with high-paying jobs and new families to move to our town. Having great schools is a must towards achieving that goal. My priorities, if elected, is to see the completion of the high school building, improve student achievement, and improve college and career readiness. We are doing well, but we can and we must do much better. We owe it to our children to give them the best education to help build their futures. Please vote for me because I am an experienced school committee member with a proven track record over six years. Please vote for me because I am committed to improving the quality of the education in Stoughton schools rather than preserving the status quo. I'm not satisfied with doing mediocre, mediocre in the rankings. Please vote for me because I will continue to demand transparency and continue to hold the administration accountable. I also wanted to state my...
About 10 seconds there, Dr. Ural?
Oh, 10 seconds? So I won't, I won't do that.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to, thank you for that. Anita, please.
I'd also like to thank SMAC and Jeff Pickett and Joe Peaster and Roy Cohen. We're all here. Thank you very much for having us. I'm a strong supporter of the Stoughton school systems, and I strongly believe that we have one of the best, some of the best teachers and administration, and they need to be supported to continue their efforts. Each and every child deserves the very best that they can, that we can give them. At the same time, I'm also a town meeting member, and as in my real-life job, I work with numbers and budgets all, every day. So I really have an eye out for the, for the budget and for the taxpayers' dollars, and squeezing every penny at all time counts. I would like to continue the work that I started. I've been there for five months. I really enjoy it, and I, I find it very challenging, but it's, it needs to be done, and I, I'm deeply committed to it, and I hope that you would consider giving me one of your two votes in, in April. Thank you.
Well, I want to take this time to thank the three of you for appearing on the program to give your insights and rationales as to why you want to serve us on our school committee. I think the points that you raised relative to the fact that, you know, we need not stop now, there are other things, we, there's always room for improvement. That's been reiterated here. There is a need, I think there's been an agreement amongst us all, that there is a need for the new high school, and that, you know, I'm, I'm strongly encouraging folks, you know, because my view is, I don't run for anything but cover, so I don't have to worry about the elective office piece, but I think it's just very important that we have a situation where we, a new high school will improve us, not only the educational construct, but also improve both the quality of life here. I think it will have an effect upon attracting people and make Stoughton a point of destination. And I think the fact that all three of you want to step up into this, particularly in this political climate that's going on nationally as well, to step up is, is to be commended. So I personally, you know, wish all of you well. Anita Hill, Joe McDonough, and also Erdem Ural, I wish you well in this election process. I will probably have an opportunity to sit with you folks again in future forums and debates, and I look forward to hearing more about your campaign strategies and what you will be doing for serving us as school committee person. So again, want to wish you a good night. Want to remind the viewing audience that once again, April 5th is Election Day. You need to mark that on your calendar, pay close attention to that. Polls open at 7:00 AM, close at 8:00 PM. And then Jeff and I were going to do a live election result starting at 8:30 PM. We'll be ensconced in the town hall as we were last year, and we'll have the successful candidates there and some other issues, and, you know, maybe Jeff will spring for some food or some drink up there. I'm not sure. It won't come from me, I can assure you, but maybe Jeff will do so. But nonetheless, we'll, again, I want to encourage you to vote, want to encourage you to tune in, and of course, I encourage you to watch Community Forum. And lastly, I want to thank my guests this evening for all that you do, and wish you well on your campaigns.
Thank you, Joe.